Good evening.
Good evening.
You want to say it loud?
Yes, that's what we say every Sunday when the minister says, "Good morning." We say, "Good morning."
All right, let's try it again. Good evening.
Good evening.
Wow, that's really good. Well, thank you for participation. Today is April 16th, the day before Tax Day. So you look like you've got the long face out there today. It'll be okay. We're glad that you're here today, here in the Rowan County Commissioner's Chambers. Welcome, each of you. We hope that you find your time profitable. So it's been our tradition that we have a couple of things at the beginning of the meeting. We have a pledge. We also have a prayer. These are called solemnizing prayers. They'll be brought by our chaplain. Solemnizing prayer is for the commissioners, helps us focus, and we ask for wisdom as we seek to do what is in the best interest of all the folks of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
What we thank you this day, you're blessed with, we thank you that we can come and be here at this county commissioner's meeting tonight, and thank our county commissioners, Lord, and the hours and the time that they put in, Lord, to serve us too, this county, Lord, and we pray, Father, that you would continue to give them wisdom and knowledge they need to make the right decisions, Lord, and we thank the Lord for the love that has this county, Lord Jesus, and we pray for this county, Lord, and we thank for every person that's gathered here tonight, Lord, and for each business that's conducted tonight and will be able to conduct it in the right manner, Lord, and we thank for the privilege that we have to be able to do this. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chaplain Taylor. Good to have you here tonight, as always. It's a microphone not working. We'll take a minute break here, please. We don't need that mic right yet, so let's start to move through the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda? I'd like to ask, we make a couple of modifications. Consent Agenda Item B and C, we'd like to put on the active agenda. So I'll make Item B, we'll make that 3A. Item C, we'll make that 3B. And then we'll make Item 3, the presentation of the plaque, we'll make that 3C.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would also request that we put Item I on the regular agenda.
Okay. So we'll make that Item, let's see, that was at the end. We'll make that 3D. That's okay. All right, any other changes, additions, deletions? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the minutes were provided for us, the minutes of April 2nd. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, let's see here, oh, boy. A little-known item that we've had available on our agenda are announcements, and China Grove has another announcement. The town of China Grove will partially close a section of Main Street from Church Street to Patterson Street to host Cruise in China Grove. Cars will be parked along Main Street downtown from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and there will be an Elvis tribute. Mike, that'll draw Mike Caskey there. Elvis tribute artist Stephen Freeman will be performing in Hannah Park from 4:00 until 6:00 p.m. And, man, I'm looking for the date on that. 4/21, so that's the 21st. So that'll be Saturday. So that's all we have for announcements. We have public comment period. Reverend Dr. Fleming Ote, thank you for being here, if you'd come forward. Welcome.
It's an honor to be here, sir. Reverend Dr. Fleming Ote, Chief of the Yatkin River Valley Indians of this area, and an 82-year-old veteran who is inviting all of the commissioners, the ministers, on April the 25th at the City Hall. We're honored to present you with special awards at that time, and for a meal, we are giving you a $5 Cracker Barrel dinner.
Woo.
Thank you very much to all of you. We are honored to be a part of this community.
Well, you had us all at Cracker Barrel. What time is that, Reverend Ote?
Noon.
Is it noon? All right.
City Hall.
All right, we look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. This trophy, Oscar, is going to be passed around and given, one being given to each of you.
Well, thank you very much. Very kind. Appreciate you.
This is the Ote Chaplain Award to the community.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't. All right. Next, we have, is it Ronnie Smith? Did I pronounce that? Did I pronounce that right?
He's back again. He's back again. And, boy, I feel good.
Ronnie, after five times, we start charging rent.
I know that. Good. I'll be very, very brief. I do have some great news tonight. To follow the April program, in May, on May the 28th, a Monday, it's Memorial Day. May is also National Military Appreciation Month. We're having a huge ceremony, a huge ceremony, at the VA, at the Salisbury National Cemetery Annex. There'll be tents set up, all the graves will have flags flying, and we invite everybody in Rowan County to come. That's on May the 28th. It'll be at 10:00 in the morning on a Monday. We also hope to announce at that time that the Veterans Administration in Washington has granted final, final approval for the enlargement and the expansion of the Salisbury National Cemetery Annex. Thank everyone here for their support. We have about a two-page summary here from Washington, D.C., approving that, and it is only with the wonderful support of Rowan County that that happened. We had a beautiful proclamation from the city of Salisbury. I'll give this to Carolyn, and the county may wish to consider doing the same thing. This draft assessment program is also available if anyone would like to look at it. We also hope to announce in the coming weeks or the next month, the final locations for our Vietnam monument, and we want to thank you for your worthy support of all these great projects for the veterans in Salisbury and Rowan County. God bless you.
Ronnie, thank you and appreciate your tireless support of our veterans. All right, next, we have Mr. Michael Julian.
Good afternoon, Chairman Eds, Commissioners, and staff. Hope everyone's had a great start to the week this week. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Again, the county has purchased the West End Plaza, also known as the Salisbury Mall, five or six years ago, with the intent of creating a mixed-use and governmental, private enterprise facility. I look at this facility and I see a lot of empty stores, and I can't help but think about all the money that the county is losing by not leasing out some of this space. The county has continued to spend money on the building, heating and air, roofs, plumbing, and other problems that it has had. The theater, theater is empty for years now after the county spent, I don't know how many thousands of dollars to create or to repair the plumbing problems that the facility had, and then would not allow the tenants to re-enter into a lease agreement. Was a great, great building, nice place to go watch movies at a cheap rate. It was a whole lot cheaper than going to Tinseltown. I may have to wait a while in order to go see a good movie, but, you know, it's a few months. So I was in this facility just last week, and I counted 25 empty storefronts. So just doing some quick math, at $750 a month per storefront, that's $18,750 a month in lease, or $225,000 a year that the county could have been taking in as revenue, instead of just spending money on the building. So the question becomes, again, is why are we not leasing out this space to individuals who may be wanting to lease or open up a store? The only reason I can come up with is the reason the county, or the majority of the board, does not want to utilize this facility, is you just want it to fail so you can place the blame on the prior board that purchased it. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Appreciate you coming. Appreciate your words. Let's see, Jeffrey Hoy and Lilian Spears.
Jeffrey Hoy, resident of Salisbury, and I come to bring you a copy of the resolution which the Democratic Party passed at their county convention. Jay needs a copy. And to raise the issue of the people, many people who are residents of Rowan County, who are under the immigration status called temporary protective status. According to Liliana, we may have as many as 8,000 people in this category in our county. Homeland Security is in the process of making decisions to cancel. They're welcome here. They have been welcomed into this community and given hospitality by our government for the last up to 20 years. The first portion of the document that I passed out to you describes temporary protective status, and then lists a number of countries that are involved, and then all the people who are here, who are functioning just as people who are residents of Rowan County. Working, forming companies, children in school, getting married, and over 20 years, people have gotten married and have children, who are now citizens. If they are, if the parents are to be deported, then what do you do with the children? What we're talking about is a deeply disruptive family thing which might, could be happening. If we're talking about losing 8,000 tax-paying residents of Rowan County, we're talking about a financial disruption to our community, and as well as the risk of sending some of these people back to countries that would not welcome them back as, in a friendly manner with the hospitality that we have given to them, because some of them would immediately become the victims of gangs who think that they're wealthy because they lived in the United States for a while, so they could become victims of criminal activity. I welcome your interest, your awareness, your willingness to respond and participate in trying to figure out ways in which we can together, this is a nonpartisan issue, I just bring it, you know, because I have a base in the Democratic Party, but I think we share this concern for people who live here, who we want to see continue to live and have protective lives here. And I turn next to Liliana Spears, who has a much greater facility in relating to this community. She speaks Spanish, and I just have a name that means today.
Well, I am Lilian Spears, and I am a resident of Rowan County, and I just want to have the conversation of temporary protective status. Most of the time, we just feel that if we don't have that status, it doesn't pertain to us, but I think everybody in the county will be affected by, on July the 4th, temporary protective status will be ended for at least 8,000 Hondurans that live here in Rowan County and Salisbury. So it is an issue that we will have conversations about, and that we need to start understanding that. I know that at the commissioners' level, probably can't do very much, but there are definitely people in the Senate and Congress, and that we do need to support some kind of immigration reform. It's a conversation we need to have. It's long overdue, and I'm just a concerned citizen, not only for the expanded community, but also for the community that lives here, that has been here forever, and the roots that you guys have had in welcoming this migrant of people that came. It would be a shame now to all of a sudden not them be forced to be underground again, because on July the 4th, all their driver's licenses will be no longer valid, they will not have proper IDs to be able to go to work. So there, it's a lot, it's a big issue that we really sometimes don't get our heads wrapped around. So I'm just here to start the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spears, Mr. Hoy. Andrew Poston.
I'm not going to be as energetic as Ronnie was, so I'm not going to, not going to jump around and things, and fortunately, I did my taxes in February, so I'm sitting pretty on that, too. Anyways, what I've come to speak to you about tonight is, we have one county agency that stands out in my mind as a jewel within our county, and I would like to give commendation right now to Sheriff Kevin Alton for running a wonderful, wonderful department over there. And, you know, he's had a couple tough cases here in the last year, and he responded quickly this past, he and his officers responded quickly this past Saturday with a capital inmate escape, and they were able to recapture the suspect, or the inmate, within, I think, three hours of when he escaped. So wonderful job there. Also, unfortunately, we've, we know that Erica Parsons is no longer with us, but his department has had to go through a lot over there dealing with that case, and recognize him, his officers, and particularly, I asked him who had a hand in both cases, particularly Lieutenant Chad Moose over there. We're blessed, and we're blessed with them, and I look forward to the district attorney doing their jobs. They're very capable people as well, another wonderful county agency, but the sheriff's department deserves all the commendation in the world, and they've really gone out to get justice for Erica Parsons, and was able to minimize potential risks to this community this past weekend. So wonderful job, Sheriff Alton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poston. I lost my glasses last week. I'm using chief readers. All right. You know, I was, I was reading through the proclamation to establish May as Shield of Badge Month, and there were some, there was information on there that I just thought was, was pretty neat, and we wanted to pull that and give Chaplain Taylor an opportunity to talk to us about that, but there's, yeah, I know. No, we had moved that. But one thing that was on there, Shield of Badge with Prayer Program began in 1995 in Rowan County by Chaplain Michael Taylor, and has begun to expand statewide, reaching out to other counties, municipalities, colleges, hospitals, correctional facilities, 911 communicators, probation officers, animal control officers, state highway patrol troopers, fire departments, clerk of court employees, magistrates, judges, district attorney's office, county commissioners, sheriffs, and attorneys. And so this is no small undertaking, and was created by our own Chaplain Taylor. He's still back there, isn't he? Okay. Well, come on forward, Chaplain Taylor, and tell us about this, and then we'll read this proclamation, but it's no small feat, and we know that he will not be with us forever, and so we wanted to give him an opportunity to, to speak this morning. You have 30 seconds. I'm kidding.
Thank you, county commissioners. Thank you for your support for the Shield of Badge Prayer Program. This is our 23rd year since we started this program in Rowan County. It starts May the 1st. It renews itself every May the 1st, and we have probably about, at the present time, probably 500 prayer partners all across Rowan County and other counties that have picked up and praying for our officers, too, that don't live in this county. I attribute, since this program was started, you could ask the sheriff, and I appreciate his support, couldn't do it without him, the many officers' lives who have been saved, the many officers' lives who have not been injured due to prayer, due to people praying for them. And everybody has a great opportunity here just to pick an officer to pray for. We will be glad to give you an officer to pray for. We have enough to, we have backup for them. Officer has backup when he goes on a call. We have an extra prayer partner for them, too, because that original prayer partner might forget to pray for the officer that day, so they're backed up with that other prayer there. So prayer is important. We know all that. Everyone here tonight knows how important prayer is. I don't have enough time to tell you the many prayers that God has answered for me. I believe in prayer. That's why I do this, and our officers need all the prayers that they can get. I recently, just this weekend, received a call from Allegheny County that one of their officers was involved in a shooting there in Allegheny County. I hadn't seen anything in the press about it, but I know this is a known fact. They called me and asked me to pray for them and pray for their county. We know in Edgecombe County, just recently, a young officer gave his life in the line of duty there. Scott County also, officer gave his life in the line of duty, and of course, in York, Mike Doty gave his life in the line of duty of protecting and serving, and we appreciate all the law enforcement officers and what they do. I have a great love in my heart for law enforcement officers. God placed it there, and that's why I do what I do. And I believe in prayer. I wouldn't get up here tonight and be a hypocrite and tell you that I didn't believe in prayer. My prayer life has changed my life, and I try to pray every day for at least two hours. I try to pray every day for all you county commissioners and all of our law enforcement people here in the county and in the state. And it's a simple program. We just ask you if you'll contact us. We'll be glad to assign you an officer, and we'll give you their date of birth. We don't give the year. Everybody's funny about how old they are. But we will give you their date of birth, and we'll give you a prayer card. You can put that up and pray for them every day. Be reminded to do that. And then we ask you on their birthday and at Christmas, and especially, I think Brother Mike Caskey's going to speak on Law Enforcement Week, but especially always the second week of May, we have a memorial service for law enforcement that's killed in the line of duty, so we ask people who are praying to send them a card on their birthday, at Christmas, and Law Enforcement Week, just to let them know that they appreciate what they're doing and they're praying for them. Now, none of us would want to leave tonight if we knew there was nobody out there to protect us in law enforcement. I'd stay here the rest of my life. I wouldn't leave. It's a dangerous, dangerous calling that they have. They don't know what they're going to face when they go up to a car. They don't know what they're going to face when they go up to a door. They don't know. They don't even know what's going to happen to them if they're sitting, a law officer been killed, just sitting on their lunch break or whatever else. It's a deadly calling for them to take, but they feel like God's called them to do that. And I think that they deserve our prayers. I think everybody can pray. I have people from everywhere, all across North Carolina and other states praying, too. I have people call me all the time about this program, wanting to start this program. My prayer is that one day, this, this program will be all across the United States of America. And so if I can help you any way, please let me know. If you want to participate in this, just contact me at the sheriff's office. We'll get you lined up. Maybe your church would like to participate in this, Sunday School class, or civic group or whatever else. But we appreciate our law enforcement officers, and I appreciate what they do. And I don't have two minutes. My two minutes is done, gone, but I appreciate and I love what they do and the work they do. And as long as God gives me the help to do what I'm going to do, I'm going to continue to be able to do and be able to pray for them and have this program. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chaplain Taylor. The next item was, I'll tell you, I'll need to read this, because we will need to vote on it. Whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer Program works to affirm the commitment of Rowan County law enforcement officers and encourages citizen awareness and appreciation for these officers. And whereas the program invites citizens to commit to pray for an officer every day for one year and to send birthday cards and notes of thanks to these officers. And whereas, through the generosity of individuals, businesses, and churches that have donated services and fundraisers, 10,000 Bibles, 3,700 Shield of Badge Bible Promise books, and 11,000 New Testaments have been purchased to be given away. And whereas, the Shield of Badge with Prayer Program began in '95 in Rowan County by Chaplain Michael Taylor, and has begun to expand statewide, reaching out to other municipalities, counties, colleges, hospitals, correctional facilities, 911 communicators, probation officers, animal control officers, state highway patrol troopers, fire departments, clerk of court employees, magistrates, judges, district attorney's office, county commissioners, sheriffs, and attorneys. Whereas, through the dedication and travels of Chaplain Taylor, counties from across the state are receiving encouragement and training for chaplains. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby establish the month of May as Shield of Badge with Prayer Awareness Month, the 16th day of April 2018. Commissioners, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chaplain Taylor, thank you once again. Now we'll move to the next item, which is Law Enforcement Week. Again, I pulled this off. We were talking about law enforcement during our active agenda, and it just seemed appropriate that, as Andrew Poston said, that we honor our law enforcement, because they've done such a good job here in the last couple of years. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I also thank Chaplain Taylor, because he makes sure that this proclamation's on our agenda every year, reminds us when it's time to put it on there, and this is the last meeting before, before May. I really, you know, I can't really add a lot to what he had to say earlier. I will say that over the last few years, there's been a big change in the law enforcement community. Some of the stuff we're going to talk about later has been impacted by that. Most of the, most of the police officers that I know and the deputies in law enforcement, you know, they want to make a difference. They sign up for good intentions, you know, just like any industry or any, any group, there's always some bad apples in there. I mean, there's, you know, you see preachers and teachers. Every once in a while, a politician that goes the wrong way, that does the wrong thing. But most of all, you're not really in it for the, for the money, as we'll talk about later. There's lots of other places now that the economy's good that you can go make more money, but I'm going to talk about the week that's coming up, which is Law Enforcement Week. It'll be in May this year. Well, it's in May every year, but this week, it's going to be May 13th through 19th, and this is something that was started by President John F. Kennedy back in the 60s, and it's been honored ever since. So I'm going to make the following proclamation in, in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation Law Enforcement Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a presidential proclamation that set aside May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week of May 13th through 19th is National Police Week. And whereas, the members of all law enforcement agencies in Rowan County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all our citizens, and whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And whereas, members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception- by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas law enforcement officers past, present, and present have faithfully and loyally rendered a dedicated service to the county and have established themselves as an inviable and enduring reputation to preserving the rights and securities of all citizens, therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 13th through 19th, 2018, as Law Enforcement Week. Now therefore be it further proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners call upon all citizens of Rowan County to observe May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or having become disabled in the performance of their duty, let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This the 16th day of April 2018.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. And those of you who don't know, Mike is a Charlotte police officer, so special for him to read that for us. All right, moving on to more good stuff, some great stuff. Huh? No, we'll do that last.
Oh, all right.
All right, so, let's see, Aaron, where's Aaron? Are you going to run lead on this? No? Okay. Well, let me give you all some notes that we have from last time. In October 16th of 2017, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners voted to establish the historic Neely School as a Rowan County Historic Landmark. The Historic Landmark Commission has prepared a special plaque to be presented to the property owners, the Historic Neely School Foundation. The HLC requests the Board of Commissioners to present the plaque in celebration of this very important achievement. So here are, here's some information about Neely School. The school is significant because of its purpose, its age, and cultural significance to Rowan County. Mr. Neely built the school on his land to educate his seven children, and here's the seven children's names: Annie, Cassie Bell, Mary, Jonas Winslow, Thomas, Henry Albert, and Julian, and the children of the Neely Town community. Julius Erastus Neely was an AME Zion minister and a farmer. The school provided the only educational opportunity for African-American children in the whole community. The school superintendent, the county school superintendent promised to provide one teacher for the school if the school was built. And the one-room schoolhouse and the original footprint of the building were designated as a local historic landmark, again, just last year, and the school was in operation until the 1940s. If you're here as part of this dedication, would you stand for us, please? And would, let's give them a hand. Don't sit down yet. So we have a plaque for you, and we'd like the Commissioners to go out front. We'd like all of you to, not all of you, all of you that are here as part of this to join us, and then do we have, can we get some, a photograph of this? Maybe the, did you bring a camera post? No? Got this? Do we have a camera with us? All right, so we'll get a camera, we'll get it to you guys, so if you'll come out front. the Neely School circa 1908, Rowan County Historic Landmark, and would like to present this to Ms. Mary. All right? Thank you. All right, thank you. Yes, she is. Her husband's a good friend of mine. Did she tell you that?
Here's the hardware that goes with that, make sure they get it.
Oh, Maggie? Yes, she is. Her husband's a good friend of mine. Did she tell you that? Boy, I just did everything backwards, didn't I? Jeez, Liz, mercy. And even tried to tell me, I'm like, don't bother me.
You know, just a few items on here.
I'm on a mission.
Lord, I didn't know they were going to pull an entire consent.
It'll work out.
It'll all work out. We'll get out at the same time.
That's right.
All right, well, thank you for allowing us to do that. It's good to have fun stuff every once in a while, even if, well, it's good to have fun stuff. All right, we'll move on to the third, a fourth item, which is Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Commissioner Kluusman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to share this during the main part of the meeting because child abuse happens in our county and in our nation much more often than many of us really understand and know. And even when we've got the cases that are reported, we know that there are a large percentage that are not reported. And so, the effect of children being abused is that this is a learned behavior, and many times they pass it down from generation to generation. You may have noticed around the community that there is a yellow sign that says Plant Hope with a bunch of little blue and silver pinwheels around it. And that's, that is representing the Garden of Hope that Prevent Child Abuse, Rowan is working to hopefully work themselves out of business someday. So I will make the proclamation in the form of a motion. Whereas child maltreatment is a community problem, and finding a solution depends upon involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and unable to cope. And whereas approximately 127,199 children were reported abused and/or neglected in North Carolina in fiscal year 2017. And whereas 32 children were victims of homicide due to abuse or neglect in North Carolina during the year 2015. And whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas the effects of child maltreatment are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child maltreatment prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, the Rowan County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rowan County, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the communities in which we live.
Second.
A motion and a second. I would point out, and the Commissioners know, we have a plaque over on the wall, I can't read from here, is that 1997? 1997, so that plaque was placed here in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so, before you leave tonight, you might want to take a gander at that. So, thank you, Commissioner Kluusman, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, next item. Kevin Davis is not able to be with us tonight. County Manager Church will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the first of the month, we received word from the North Carolina Department of Transportation and the Division of Aviation that there might be some eligible grant funding. And we get those calls from time to time to where they ask us if there's something that we're working on that, you know, could benefit us. And there is something that would help us, and they're wanting to know pretty fast. I provided a letter to the state letting them know that we have the ability to support a 10% match, and, but I followed up that, you know, after it's approved by the board, we can submit a formal application to kind of meet her timeframe, because as I understand it, they needed to know pretty soon whether or not we could utilize any of the grant money. But one thing, one of the things that we do need is the Airport Instrument Landing System, which is referred to in the industry as an ILS, and that's basically enables pilots to be able to land when there's poor weather conditions. The current system is approximately 20, 20 to 21 years old, and it's no longer supported by the company that, or the manufacturer that made it as of 2013. So right now, when things go wrong, according to Kevin, there's been some times where it's hard to find replacement parts or this or that for it. So, this is something we need. If the state will match it, that's really good, even though we didn't budget for it this year, Kevin is asking for it in this upcoming budget, so it would be good. But in order for us to apply for this application, we would need for the board to approve it.
And I'll just, I'll just read here quickly what an ILS system is, so that you know. It's a runway approach system based on two radio beams which provide pilots with vertical and horizontal guidance during an approach to land. So, county manager said, in bad weather, if we're socked in, airplanes need to know how close to the ground they are and if they're on the right approach path. So it's very critical, or we'll end up with a bad accident, so. So do we have a motion to give the manager authority to apply for the grant and to provide the 10% match?
So moved. Second.
Hey. We have five motions and five seconds. So that'll work. All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I think it's important that the National Guard also sent a letter in expressing their concern with having that ILS system that's currently outdated, especially since they're talking about that major expansion and bringing in new helicopters into this area. I think it's imperative, whether we get a match or not, that this moves forward.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Good point. All right, next item, Law Enforcement Memorial Update. Mr. Muir, welcome.
Thank you. Somewhat providential that this is on the agenda considering the Shield of Badge and the Law Enforcement Week proclamations from earlier. As you, the board may remember, in February, an RFP was let to obtain design and fabrication services for a law enforcement memorial. Salisbury Marble and Granite was selected to furnish these services. And we had sort of an informal group that met and talked about the memorial and where would be an appropriate spot. And given its nature, that it's in recognition of law enforcement officers, we felt that a location around the courthouse would be appropriate. And we selected two locations, and I think most of you know that downtown Salisbury is in a historic district, and so before we prepare an application, we just wanted to show you a couple things about the locations that we selected and get you to choose a location, and then authorize the county manager and staff to prepare it and do a couple other things. So I'll be rather brief. So you see here, location A is what we would consider to be our preferred location, it is to the left of the courthouse steps facing the street. And then the other is in this little, I guess, a landscape architect would tell you that's a pocket park there between the courthouse and the justice center, but that is location B. So we think that if we put the monument here on about a 10 by 14 concrete pad, it would connect by a similar width of sidewalk that is here, connect to the monument by six by eight. It's a little difficult to see, but down in the bottom right-hand side, you'll see the photo simulation of what we think the monument will look like in terms of its appearance and scale. We'll look a little bit more closely here in a second of the specifics. Similarly, option B, our secondary location, would be here and off of the pad towards the rear, same-size pad and access. This particular monument is in Union County. Salisbury Marble and Granite's parent company did manufacture this particular monument. The one that we have proposed here is going to be very similar in size, maybe a little bit different, but this gives you a good perspective of what it will look like. So you see the dimensions here, overall height, it's about six and a half feet tall, it's going to have base pedestals of gray granite. And then when we get to this item C and above, it's going to be an imperial black marble. And then the focal point, aside from the names that will be on these columns, is going to be this bronze flame. We think at this point there may be the opportunity to shine an LED light of some color on it. We've talked about red. Blue is certainly an appropriate color as well, given its law enforcement perspective. But that's just something that we're talking about at this point. This is an artist's rendering of the number of names that they feel they can get on this particular monument. This estimate is that they can get 10 per column face, and the sides would even be available. If this were to hold true, I think we could probably get 60 names on there. One of the other things that I failed to mention is that based on this pad, regardless of location... of location, there should be ample room to add additional columns in the future if, at some point that were necessary. We certainly hope not, but that's real quick overview of what the memorial would entail. So we're asking you to do a couple things tonight. First one is to just select a location. Again, we feel that option A, which is to the left of the courthouse steps, is the preferred location, but of course, that's your opportunity to make that decision. And then there are two things we would also ask you to do. Authorize the county manager or staff to prepare the application to the Historic Properties Commission, and that would include any fees or signatures needed for processing, and then if there's any incidental work related to concrete or electrical work that may be required for the install. Any questions?
Ed, is there, was there any conversation about having this memorial closer to the actual entrance? In other words, where the flagpole is immediately to the right? I mean, this is an important memorial, and I just thought it'd be nice if it was closer to people coming in and out of the courthouse.
Well, and that's a good question. I think we considered something like that, but then our general thought was that we didn't want it to be an attraction for vandalism, maybe? If it was sort of removed, but given a place of significance as well, that it had a sense of place there as opposed to sitting on the sidewalk where, you know, a variety of things may happen. People may sit on it. People may climb on it. We're not wanting it to be that type of monument. The sheriff may have, he was in on some of those conversations, but I think that was generally our thought.
Yeah. One thing, Craig, is that what he was saying there is that it's still, I think it's still close enough where people can see what it is from the sidewalk without, you know, people are walking up through there all the time. You know how people throw trash down, things like that. It's close enough to the sidewalk where you can see it without being up on top of the sidewalk.
I just wanted to make sure it gets its full exposure, because it's an important monument. But I know you were on that committee, so I'll yield to your judgment.
I also think there was some concern about where the utilities were over there also.
Okay. Because we had talked about removing the flagpole, but at this point, I think we're going to leave it. The other thing, and you can't tell looking at this particular photo simulation there, but the, I think they call it lithochrome, and that may be the wrong term, but when they cut the names into the face of this marble, they are colored with this material that makes them pop, and so I think that'll be a good opportunity to see, you know, the text as well, even from a little distance.
Thank you, Ed. You don't expect the trees to cause an issue there, do you? Is it going to be visible in site A from the road?
Well, this, again, this photo simulation is, those trees are on the, on that side of the sidewalk. They're not, they're not on the courthouse side. They're on the, between the parking spaces and the, see?
I was just thinking about traffic.
Yeah, but you're right. I see what you're saying. I think if you, if you're going to be on the sidewalk, that's kind of where you're going to see it. It's not going to be.
Very visible from the road.
And it's, it's six and a half feet tall, so I mean, that, one of the things that we were told in preparing an application is the Historic Properties Commission is concerned about scale and the, in the environment. I think this fits rather nicely in that area. It's not going to be overwhelming. It's, it's a, it's consistent with the space.
Certainly it won't be overwhelming if we have to go to B. It's going to get lost in between all those buildings and things. I hope that we can work it out to put it in A up there.
All right, any other questions for Ed? If not, I'll just ask for a motion for A or B.
I'll make a motion to locate the monument in Plan A.
All right, thank you. And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then I need a motion. I'll make, I'll make this in the form of motion to authorize county manager or staff to prepare and submit their certificate of appropriateness to the Salisbury HPC, including any related fees or signatures for processing.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Making the form of a motion, authorize the county manager or staff to obtain any necessary bids or select a contractor for incidental concrete and electrical work if needed, work related to the monument.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Ed, thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, item number seven, to continue with the law enforcement theme, manager church.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, as the memo said, there's been some vacancies in the sheriff's office. When the sheriff's department went to fill one of the vacancies, they learned that our current hiring rate in some cases may be uncompetitive even within Rowan County, and as we've looked into it more, the sheriff has done a lot of research. We have found that other agencies are giving bonuses at this time, and that the pay raises, you know, continue to be given. You know, even across the country, there seems to be a shortage of police officers and folks willing to go to BLET, which is the basic law enforcement training. Recently, in Charlotte, there were news articles that the city of Raleigh has been there recruiting Charlotte officers to go work for the city of Raleigh, and then the, the city or the Fraternal Order of Police there, you know, refer to it as poaching their officers. We all know that there has been, here in our own community, Salisbury has, you know, had, I think they're starting to get a handle on it, but in the past, there's been a lot of vacancies there, and, you know, recruitment efforts that they've implemented. After speaking with the sheriff about this and looking at our current trend, it doesn't appear, appear at this moment in time that in the last six months, we've lost any officers, but there is a fear in the next six months to a year that could start happening. There's a lot of things to look at when, when you talk about pay, and it's pretty, it's, it's not so much complicated as convoluted. Even some of the local municipal police departments don't pay social security tax. They're not in the social security system, so there's all types of things like that that makes it convoluted to determine what their pay actually is. Also, the number of hours they work in a 30-day period, that fluctuates from department to department. You know, there's just so many different things that different communities can do that affect pay that's not, that's not, well, not, not, not in a bad way, but it's just not transparent, because the nature of, there are so many small local governments, and, you know, there's 100 counties in the state, so, I mean, you've got lots of different things going on, and there's just no way to know how every single agency pays their officers. Then you've got, you know, different agencies provide different sick times, different vacation times, different benefits, different insurance benefits, which, you know, there's just so many different variables that are out there. We even have variables within our, our department, because we have a pretty large department. But the sheriff has been, been very proactive. He's concerned, and he wants to make sure that, that Rowan County doesn't lose any of the, the officers and deputies that we currently have. We have a very talented group of employees, and we want to make sure that we stay competitive. And in talking with the sheriff about that, one of the, one of the ways that we talked about would, would be a first step is to hire a consultant that does this type of work, and we reached out to the Piedmont Triad Regional Council on Government, which has a section that kind of specializes in human resources, and the one we, the folks that they would send here if we agreed to this study at a cost of $12,000. One guy is David Hill, and David retired from Caldwell County as the Director of Human Resources. Another guy is Kim Newsom. He retired from Randolph County a long time ago as the Human Resources Director, and before that, he worked at the state for the Office of State Personnel. So all the folks that, that work in contract with the Piedmont Triad Council on Governments are retired HR specialists, and the ones that would be coming and spending time with our sheriff's department would be, those are the two, two folks I can name off the top of my head. One I've worked with, and the other one I know really well. I don't know him well, I know his name well. Another thing about using the Piedmont Triad Council is when you use, even though this is not something that would have to be bid anyway, but, you know, they are a quasi-government agency, and this is a pretty, I think it's a very fair process. You'll also see a recommendation from the interim Human Resources Director for the county who retired from the city of High Point, and he recommends using these folks. I've worked with Matt Reese. He did a salary study for a whole county that I worked at previously, and he's the one that wrote the proposal in here. But the sheriff and I spoke to him on the phone one day, and the sheriff and I have spent numerous hours talking about the different things that are going on in law enforcement in the county, and, you know, one question that I've, that I've heard, and I think you'll hear is, is, well, why, you know, one, we just recently did a study, and the net, you know, and folks say, well, didn't you just, well, it was about two, two years ago that we did a study, and one, one response that I would say is that law enforcement is changing fast. Just watch the TV. You know, read the local newspaper and see what the news and story is. You've seen in the last two years, right before we started that study, a really, a real shift in, in law enforcement and the recruitment efforts that law enforcement are making. So there's been a really fast and sweeping change in the industry. The second question you may get is, well, what about the, all the other county employees and other departments? And my response to that would be, again, it's the sign of the times. Law enforcement, you know, nationwide, we see over and over again, there are a shortage of police officers, a shortage of folks going into the profession. So I think it's, it's a unique profession, and it's one that, you know, you don't want to be, you don't want to be caught a year from now and have 15 or 20 folks leaving, not because they're mad at the sheriff or the county, but it's just economics when these, when these things happen. We did something similar, except we didn't do a study with social services. Y'all may remember about three and a half years ago with income case maintenance workers. There was, there was a trend in that job class where they were literally going to Charlotte and Concord and being recruited. So, you know, the, that's a little bit more simplified than this one, because you have so many things changed, and we even are, are watching what the current counties are going to do in their budget, and I know the sheriff went and met with Cabarrus County, but I don't know that they've came out and told us exactly what they're going to do yet. So, you know, that can change from time to time. The, another question that I've received is, well, when is this going to be implemented? Well, first, we have to see what the recommendation is, and that's probably going to be, you know, at least mid-July, August. So, you know, this, this isn't something we, we timed to be at near-budget time. It's just one of those things that comes, and it really could become, in the next six months to a year, a small crosses for, for local, for all communities that are, that are looking to retain law enforcement officers. We've just been really fortunate here thus far, but as an example, just off the top of my head, and Sheriff, if you want to come up and jump in, as an example, our starting pay for a deputy is around $33,000. Salisbury's starting pay is $39,000, and that's just one example I can give you. And their pay to get there, I mean, their pay has increased sharply in the last couple of years. So that's just one example. There's a lot of other ones that, again, you have to look at other things, and you can't just say, well, is that 39, 33? You really need to know what the, the other differences are, and that's what I think these consultants will do. Sheriff?
And thank you for even considering this, and let me say this, this isn't about my salary. I'm not up here fussing about mine. My job's easy if I got good people. I want to keep the people I got, because we are fairly successful. But I've got numerous employees. If they chose to, they could go to the city right now and receive $20,000 raises. Some of them are my key people. You hear Lieutenant Moose's name. He's one. They recruit him hard all the time. So I didn't really realize it until I saw Charlotte PD. They went to the city council with about 200 officers about their pay, and when I heard the $50,000 number, I don't fear losing people to Charlotte. Concord, Conaples, Mooresville, Huntersville, they're going to lose people to Charlotte. Then I'm going to lose, Brad Riley lost six people in one day to Charlotte Meck. My folks aren't going to leapfrog over Cabarrus to go to Mecklenburg, but they're going to go to Concord, which is starting at 39 come July 1st. Cabarrus County will start at 39 July 1st. Mooresville is already at 39. We're at 33.7, and they pay 10% of their insurance. These other counties aren't charging that 10% of that insurance. If you do the math, that's $1,000 they're paying, and we have a pretty good insurance plan. I get that, but that's $1,000 off that starting pay, the way the new employees look at it. So I just think, I didn't want anybody to think I'm skewing numbers to sales pitch something. That's why I went to Aaron, I said, "This thing is so complicated." There's 100 police, I mean, 100 sheriff's offices and about 490 police departments in North Carolina, and nobody does it the same way. Like he said, Conaples isn't even under social security. Orange County is not under social security, so they contribute 8.5% to their retirement. We do the standard, but we're under social security. So that's what I'm saying. There's so many things, and even if we looked at a 5, 8, 10% raise across the board, and I'm just throwing out numbers, that's still not going to fix some other things. We need to look at the total pay package, not just dollars. I mean, some counties have dental, and, you know, we're going to have to get competitive. I went and met with the Assistant County Manager in Cabarrus, because she was working on another thing that we have an issue with, and Aaron talked about that, and it's to deal with 28-day cycles and how employees are paid. And I sat down in front of Pam, and I said, "I'm here to see how y'all are so competitive. We're not," and she looked at me and laughed. She said, "Your pay package isn't competitive with anybody." And she didn't mean that condescending. She was trying to be helpful. And she had her chart. She did what we're doing last year, and she shared some of that information, but...
Sheriff Alton, do you have any idea of what we're looking at as far as monies? I'm asking for budgetary reasons.
Well, I'll tell you this. You know, typically sheriff's office don't pay quite what police departments, and Charlotte, $50,000 is a big number. If you compare us just to Salisbury PD, at every position, we're 16 to 22% behind. That's just Salisbury. I've got guys been with me seven, eight, one guy's 13 years, and he's making less than, if he went to Salisbury tomorrow and started all over, and it's six months, he'd be at $41,000. Most of my guys are $7,000 to $10,000 behind the competitive agencies. And I get, I sent y'all that email, that I had seven agencies that I thought were threats to hire our folks, and seven agencies being sheriff's office that were 120 to 190,000 people. Out of those 14 agencies, we were the lowest starting pay of all of them, and I didn't cherry pick. I just tried to do it, and I don't even consider it this way, because the Yakin River is the great divide. We don't lose people to Davidson, and they don't lose people to us. I mean, that's just, everything goes this way. But I'm, I mean, I've got two of my crew team members, one's in the hiring process with Homeland Security, and one's going to DMV. I'm going to lose him, one of my, he's going to go from 36, being with us eight years, to $49,000 to start with.
Kevin, how many, Sheriff Alton, how many staff members are you talking about? How many do you have?
Total?
Yeah.
Right at 200.
And you're talking about us looking at, at all of these positions?
I want to look at all of it. You know, you got to even dig deeper. Look at my detention... Look at my detention staff, they don't have cars. You know, that's a benefit to my full-time sworn deputies that can go out and work secondary and do other things. And the detention job's the hardest job up there. And, you know, that's where our biggest retention problem is. So I don't want to forget about those men and women. That's a constitutional charge. So I think we need to look at all the positions and just see where we are. You know, if you, I'm going to be honest, if you do 15%, that's a big number, but that's where I'm telling you we're behind, that's about 1.3 million reoccurring.
Sheriff Alton, what's your opinion if we did a phased-in package where we started at maybe 5% per year for three years?
That's better than not doing anything. It still scares me. Boards change, things could change. China Grove's in the second year of their three-year phase, and it's going well. And their chief knows, one of their individuals talked to us, and I tried to hire him, and I was $11,000 cheaper than what he's making, and he's a 14-year veteran. You know, you can get all the rookies you want, but if we're going to continue to replace retirees, and that's where I'm losing people right now. I got two in jobs, but got, I lost two two weeks ago, I'm losing two in July, one in August, and one in October that I know of already to retirement. And we used to have people in the pipeline to hire them, and we'd poach, and we were decent at that. There's just, the candidates aren't there like they were in the city. It's full staff. They told us this week they don't need us starting May 1st. I'm glad for that.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. They've been fortunate, but they jacked those numbers up and they filled those positions. I'm just afraid once we get behind, it's going to get hard to fill them. That's my concern.
Sheriff, what, I know, I think 2000, in 2016, I did a little speech that I was doing, and I did some research, and I haven't seen the latest BLT numbers, BLET numbers, but I know that year, there's like a 50% drop-off from...
It's about 20% from where it was five years ago. I believe, and I've got the numbers at the office, I didn't bring them, but about 2,700 statewide, and five years ago, about 20, back up to 22 this year, it dipped farther, but last year it was about up to 2,200 statewide. In Royan County, Royan Cabarrus, we average about 48 to 55 BLET graduates a year.
And that's one, I know that is one of the issues, because if you're getting a brand-new officer, you've got to do all the background, and they got to go through BLET, and then they got to go through their field training or the patrol training. We're looking over a year usually, from start to finish, before you even get an officer with no experience on the street.
Well, that's correct. And the city's gone that route because they had to. They didn't get any lateral transfers hardly. And they're hiring them and putting them through BLET, which means they're off the streets for that period, and then they're field training as well. They're, they're not really counted as FTE, full-time employee, even though they're on the payroll at a full-time, they can't perform as a full-time to start with.
Yeah, so you, like I said, you're spending that much time just to get someone with no experience, you know, a year to get somebody that has any experience. And the, I guess the other thing about it is, Sheriff was talking about losing folks. We've, you know, I've had, actually, one of the, one of the people that came from Cabarrus came to work for me, and he was telling me what, you know, some of the things they did there, and it was, it's just, it's just so different right now over the last several years. And I give the sheriff credit because he's been talking about this for several years because he saw what was coming. But just, just in the, in the industry itself, things have changed so much. I think I've, I sent a video out, and I know a couple of you might have saw it, where an officer made an arrest and just got exposed to, probably had some fentanyl in it, and, you know, he went to, almost had a, you know, cardiac arrest there, just, just from getting fentanyl. Can, you can have a piece the size of a grain of salt that just touches you and can give you a major problem. So if you take that, you take the change in society, just, there's segments of society that are just much more aggressive towards police officers. All the, the safety issues that have come up over the years, you know, we've had officers being shot while they're sitting in their cars. If you take that, plus the economy's getting a lot better, which we're thankful for, you know, people coming into are looking, well, I can go do, you know, I should go do something else. And when we try to recruit people here, we see the problems the whole country's having with having quality workers. And so if, even if you're, if you have a business that's not law enforcement, and you have someone with 10 years' experience in law enforcement, you say, well, this person would make a very good employee because they come to work and they're trustworthy. So, you know, I agree with the sheriff, we need to, and what Aaron was saying, because we don't really know what we're, you know, we can throw darts and try to, try to come up with something, but we don't know if that's going to fix the overall problem. I mean, it's, it's going to get worse before it gets better, but, you know, if you're talking, you know, things we do now, or it may not affect us, you know, changes we may make now to get new people in are not going to help us for a year, a year and a half from now. So, you know, I think Sheriff was talking about some of the background problems, you know, you can't just, the problem is you just can't pick anyone to be a police officer. There's so much that has to go through. I mean, you're talking, you know, criminal record, people, people change their lives, but if they have certain things in their background, or even to the point of credit, you know, you can't have someone that has certain, certain type of credit because that makes them more liable to things that could happen in their job. So, you know, it's not, you know, you just can't just recruit people, you have to have certain people that can pass the background. So, like I said, this is what we need, I know we need to do it, and I think the sheriff is, he's been talking about it, I know for at least three or four years that he saw the storm coming, so...
I know we're not Ardell County, but I'll tell you something that is scary. They have 20 more employees than I do, and their budget's $9 million higher. I'm not asking for $9 million. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we try to get by the best we can with what we have, and I understand that, that dollars are still tight, even though the economy's turning around. I'm not up here asking for all that, but, you know, they are slightly bigger too, so I get that. I do appreciate the time and any consideration. And Craig, back to your question, I think some of the folks would look at that as a Band-Aid and a promise on the five, I understand budgetary and building that, but it scares me a little bit. I've talked to a lot of my guys about what'll help you stay, what's this, what's this, why would you leave? That's, they're a little leery of that, but if that's what you vote to do instead of doing nothing, that's what we'll live with.
No, I just wanted to know before we have this study done, if that's an option that we need to look at, if that works, or if it doesn't. If it doesn't, then we don't need to look at it.
I would prefer not to, but you, you five have the purse strings and know what'll work and won't work financially.
We're going to yield to your better judgment.
Thank you.
Because this is what you do.
You have a question, it looks like, or comment?
No, you know, we've been spoiled as a county, when I say that, county organization within the borders of Royan County. We've had municipalities that have struggled over the last few years, and you guys have been the stabilizing force. Couple of reasons for that. One, the folks that work for Royan County Sheriff's Department love Royan County, and these are mostly our homegrown folks, and they love being here, and they want to take care of their community. There's another reason, and that's because they love Sheriff Alton. And these folks would, they'll work for less to work for you. Now, I'm not encouraging to work, for them to work for less to work for you. I'm just telling you, everybody in this room knows, and folks in this community know, they'll take less to work for Sheriff Kevin Alton.
Well, thank you.
I asked Kevin earlier, you know, 2016 was not a good year in Royan County for crime. I asked the sheriff for some crime numbers, and I don't, so I don't know if you guys know some of this stuff, but even though we, you know, our whole county struggles with budgetary issues, I say it all the time, you know, we're not Cabarrus County, we don't have the Charlotte Motor Speedway, we don't have Concord Mills, there's a lot that we don't have, but we're about $90 million behind those folks. Now, I understand they're bigger than us, I get that, but from a scale standpoint, we are way be, way, way behind on our revenues, on a lower, on a lower tax rate. But we got to do better on that. But here's what our sheriff and his deputies and staff did. 2016, they had, there were eight murders in the county. 2017, you know how many? Rape down. Aggravated assault, cut in half. Burglary down. Larceny was up, and Jim Green and I are sad that motor vehicle theft was up. So we don't know how to affect any of that because it's not our job. But the stuff that runs an arrow right through our heart, issues of personal issues of murder, rape, assault, those things, your staff are just heroes in what you're doing. And you guys have stabilized this community in 2017. And I don't know that people really know what you did for the city of Salisbury, what you did for this whole community. So where there is a will, my friend, there's a way. And there is, there are very few folks that we respect more than our emergency workers. We are honored to have Mike Caskey on this board, to be our heart, the heartthrob of this board. And while we're off doing all of our stuff, all of us, doing different things because we all focus on different things, Mike comes to us and says, you need, you need to talk about this, this is what's happening. And there's never been a time that Mike hasn't come to us in all earnestness, and we've not taken action. And I don't think you have either. I think, I think we've come...
The board's always been there for, for the agency.
I think we've come to you at times and said, what do you need?
Absolutely.
So thank you for this chance, and we got to get this right, and then we got to, as a community, do better to pay better. No, well, no offense against Walmart, but if we want to be a Walmart community, or we want to step it up and we want to be a quality community, again, no, no offense to them because they provide a service all across the country, but we got to be better.
I appreciate the kind words, but it's not a, you hear me say it's not a one-horse show.
I know.
I've got good people, good command staff, and we've got good police chiefs, and we've got good networking. And this, this whole county is very fortunate. When I go to other meetings and I tell other sheriffs, I've got 11 police agencies in my county. I signed on the mutual aid forms this morning. Cleveland worked harder for us in the county than they did in their own community this weekend. And that's, that's something we've worked hard to build. But we do appreciate the support the board's always given us.
Commissioners, do we have a motion to go to Piedmont Triad Regional Council and retain them as consultants to perform a study at the cost of $12,000?
Don't move.
Second.
We have 17 motions and five seconds, so that's good. Anything else? Sheriff, anything else from you?
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
All right.
Finance report, make it a good one. We need 1.3 million dollars. If you could just move those lines a little bit, it'd sure be helpful right now.
Well, the first chart's not going to show you what you want, but it's, it's not, there are some reasons why this is happening. So our budget for revenue in 2016 is about $1,005,000 greater than the budget in the prior year. But yet, at the end of March, we're sitting at, within $100,000 of the same number. But the main reason for that has been some changes at DSS, and the state has taken over some programs where revenues and expenditures ran through the county. And that's to the tune of about $2 million. So that's why the, you know, the lines have converged.
So revenues are $2 million lower, but we should see expenses also?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So that's...
Wait, 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 say that again. Revenues are $2 million lower?
We'll be, yeah, she'll show revenues $2 million lower here, but if what she just said is true, and we believe it to be, when the expense slide comes up, it should also show expenses as $2 million lower.
Lower, okay. That's not what I understood.
So what you're saying, Leslie, is this basically passed through money?
That's right.
Yes, it was in the childcare development area. So now we are to expenditures. And expenditures, if April, well, if April can move the slide. I don't know that she can hear me either, I'll talk into Aaron's. Can you switch to the expenditure? Okay. All right, here, expenditures are up, but there are some good reasons for that. In the childcare development area, expenditures are down, the same amount as the revenue, so about the $2 million. Some of the reason that the expenditures are up is our budget is, on the expenditure side, about $1.1 million more than in the prior year. Some other things have happened, such as the incentive for Duke Energy. It hit this year earlier, we just paid it earlier, we had all the information, so paid it a month earlier than in the prior year. So some things like that have, have hit. We had a cost of living increase, which is going to affect expenditures, and we also increased our spending for the schools. Those are the main areas where we're seeing an increase, which is exactly what we would The next graph is property taxes. And so for property taxes, over the last four years through the end of February, we've collected between 94% and 97% of budget. We're up right now about $800,000 over a year ago, which is about a 1% increase. And then the sales tax comparison. Sales tax is at 52% of budget, which is exactly what it was a year ago, at 52% of budget. The dollar amount is about $500,000 increase and...
And annual. Annual.
And from July through December, $500,000 increase.
Six months.
And, and that is a 4% increase for the year, for those six months. So that's trending well for the county. And then the last slide, again, is just, shows you how difficult sales tax can be
It's like my algebra grades.
So that's the end of the report, unless there are questions.
All right, any questions? All right, item number nine, budget amendments. Do we have a motion approved?
Don't move.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10, we received Child Protection Team annual report. You've had a chance to review that and read through it. Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to accept this report?
Don't move.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All righty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else for the cause?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a great week.